Here it.
Always reading the order, please stand for the.
And to the right, lovely, for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no question, justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
And saying to approve the agenda, all those favoring, they go by the saying, aye, 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 post same sign, pushing carries. First up is informational items is avid presentation.
Thank you again, school board for having us tonight. We have our final group of avid future graduates coming to their presentation. So if you guys. We're waiting on one that should be coming in. She lives quite a ways away. So hopefully she makes it in. But does anybody want to volunteer to go first?
As they're like.
They're like, no, they don't want to go first. They were not expected then. Dan, like, I guess you can work down right here.
Just right there, honey, and then they can hear you.
Yeah, they.
Or sit in the chair or center.
Okay, um, hello, my name is Caitlin Killian. I've been in Avid for seven years. So I've been in since I was in sixth grade. I've been accepted into many colleges, but I do plan on attending CBC to get my medical assistant and lobotomy certification. Avid has helped me prepare for colleges in many way. Avid has also taught me about money management, scholarships, applying to colleges and more. I also appreciate Avid for keeping me on top of my organization and homework.
Um, good afternoon. My name is Estefana Miranda. I've been in Avid for three years. Um, Avid challenged me by improving my organization skills as well as my time management. During my time in Avid, I have really appreciate appreciated the amount of time I spent in college application and working on scholarships in my sophomore and junior year, which. Um, yeah, which has helped me. Being it's which made it more official in my senior year. I feel prepared for college because I feel I've learned how to analyze award letters for from colleges. My plan for next year is to attend Washington State University at Tri-Cities and studying early childhood education.
Good afternoon. My name is Valeria Escobar Lopez. I've been I in Avid for six years. Um, Avid has helped me improve my organizational skills and my time management. Avid has challenged me in many ways which have like for one, public speaking, uh, being in front of everybody, um, getting to know new people, trying to ask questions, get more out there. It has also challenged me to like do more research and more careers that I did not think would add that I would be interested in. Um. I learned different study tips that I could use and money management. Um, and more for next year, I plan on going to CBC, just really for an AA to start with lab chemistry and also traditional arts.
Hello, my name is Victor Guerrero and I've been in Avid since sixth grade, so seven years. Next year, I plan to attend Perry Tech to further expand my knowledge on electricity. I plan to attend Perry Tech because I've looked into their electric program and I've seen that they have a really good employment rate. So I'm looking forward to that. And Avid has helped me throughout the years, keep me organized. And we're learning about scholarships and the Ms. Blair shows us how to apply to colleges and get more grants and show us how to apply for the best plan was.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Alkazar and I've been in Avid for seven years. Um, I've been accepted to Eastern Oregon, Eastern Washington, WSC Tri-Cities and CBC. I don't know where I'm gonna go yet, but I do plan on going to either CBC or WSU Tri-Cities. Um, I want to go into the medical field, so I plan on studying nursing to become a pediatric nurse. Um, I feel prepared for college because Avid has taught me different ways to organize myself, manage my time and set future goals for myself. Avid has pushed me to challenge myself academically as I've taken, um, high school, college and the high school classes. Um, I appreciate how Avid has helped me to be on track to graduate and prepare me to be successful in college.
Hello, my name is Erica Hernandez and I have been in Avid since the sixth grade, which is approximately seven years in the program. Through Avid, I found my calling in the STEM field, majoring in computer science. Though I am still uncertain, this is my final decision on the major I am planning to pursue. When I was little, I would have never imagined myself getting through the process of applying and preparing for college by myself. My family members are mostly migrant workers, so they have no knowledge of a lot of the procedures and steps it takes of applying to college. Um, Avid has been a huge help with our journey towards our goals and I can say first in Avid was the right program for me and many of the other students here. In the short couple of months we have had with Ms. Blair, she has pushed us to apply to as many colleges as possible for backups and so forth. In the process, I have been accepted to the following: Eastern Oregon University, Washington State University, Hendrix College, Whitworth University, CBC, and I'm still waiting for the University of Washington decision, but have not decided on the best place for me yet. During my time at Avid, I appreciated all the hard work and commitment that all the teachers have given us through the years. They made us prepared for life after high school and though I'm still terrified to the bone about flying off on my own without the warm support of Ms. Blair. I am confident confidently saying that I am also excited to see where my path will lead. I used to be a student scared and uncertain about anything and every decision I made, but through Avid, I have learned to grow confidence within myself and have a voice of my own. Thank you for having me tonight.
Oh, that concludes our presentations for our senior Avid students and just want to thank the board and our district for supporting this program that has a positive impact on so, so many kids. So, thank you very much. And you guys gotta go home and study, so.
Moving on. Hearing from visitors. Uh, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this, thank you. If this is the case, we ask that you prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board, come to the microphone at this table here. And state your name. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character or motives of any individual. You keep your comments concise, non-emotional and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments too. It is best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before the meeting. If this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing section. And we will go with three minutes per person, uh, for a total of twenty minutes. So first up is Kimberly Starr. The Starr or start?
Starr, S T A R R.
And just so you know, and so everyone knows, uh, we'll do, there's a countdown clock there. It'll be ten seconds. Go beep beep beep. Just keep talking through that. The second center beeps is when it is your time.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly Starr. I'm a Proster community member, retired teacher and club advisor and mother to two previous Proster School District students. Per the language in Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two, the Washington State Legislature intends to require school district board of directors to adopt inclusive curricula and select diverse, equitable, inclusive, age-appropriate instructional materials that includes the history's contributions and perspectives of historically marginalized and underrepresented groups. The legislature believes that promoting inclusive learning standards, curricula and instructional matter materials will improve student achievement, attendance, parent and family engagement and other dimensions that contribute to student success. The two thousand twenty-three twenty-four OSPI Proster School District School Board, excuse me, School Report Card includes data regarding the following groups in our school district which are included, who are listed for inclusion in the expanded curriculum. Point four percent of our students are Native Americans. Seventy-one point four percent of our students come from various racial and ethnic backgrounds, including, but not limited to African Americans, Hispanic Americans, Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans. Eighty point one percent of our students come from low-income families. Fourteen point three percent of our students have disabilities. Twenty-seven point six percent of our students are English learners. Regarding specifically LGBTQ people as defined in the RCW, the following two thousand twenty-two twenty-three healthy use survey data represents our current tenth and twelfth graders answers when they were in eighth and tenth grades. Regarding gender, one point one percent of our sophomores are transgender, two point seven percent of sophomores and two point nine percent of seniors are questioning or unsure of their gender. One point eight percent of sophomores and point seven percent of seniors state another gender description fits better than the listed options. Regarding sexual orientation, one point one percent of sophomores and point seven percent of seniors are gay or lesbian. Nine point four percent of sophomores and thirteen point one percent of seniors are bisexual. Six point seven percent of sophomores and three point six percent of seniors are questioning or not sure of their sexuality. And five percent of sophomores and five point one percent of seniors express another description fits better than the listed options. The bill also states the legislature recognizes that inclusive curricula have been shown to often improve the mental health, academic performance, attendance rates and graduation rates of marginalized communities. Additionally, students in schools with inclusive curricula have also reported hearing fewer homophobic remarks and in schools with inclusive curricula, uh, less than half of the students felt unsafe at school due to their sexual orientation compared to the two-thirds of students who attended schools without inclusive curricula. I'm disappointed this resolution is even coming before the board. The data I shared proves students who meet the above descriptions exist in our district. By voting to oppose this bill, our school board members are marginalizing and disenfranchising disenfranchising many students and are illustrating they have little interest in improving the mental health, academic performance and attendance and graduation rates of our students. If our board members are truly committed to proving, excuse me, to providing the best and safest learning environment for students, they would support this Senate bill rather than opposing it. I hope our school board leadership seriously considers the message they are sending our students with a vote opposing the Senate bill. Thank you.
Uh, Laura Jansen.
Hey, my name is Laura Jansen. It's L U R A J A N S E N. I have lived in Proster my whole life. I was a Proster student and I have a Proster student. Um, I am here in opposition to the resolution zero-one-two-four being presented tonight. I believe this resolution to be ill-informed and a waste of time. I'm here to say I support both legislative bills, legislative bills targeted. As mentioned in the resolution, all students should feel they belong in Proster. We should embrace these equity and inclusion bills. Um, you will hear the same script from others tonight. Why? We hope that hearing this over and over will give you a sense that this is not the will of the people. Resolution being presented tonight is almost the same as other resolutions from other school boards in Washington State. If you, the school board directors, favor unoriginal responses and copy others, we will do the same and respond in unison tonight. I urge you not to pass and sign resolution, resolution zero-one twenty-four. Um, I want to add too, as a parent and a community member outside looking in, it seems the only time the board takes a stand is when there's something that comes up that involves being inclusive, diversity, especially when it comes to the LGBTQ community. And it is so sad and so disappointing. Um. The damage it does to kids when we make them feel unwanted and unseen and unheard and unappreciated. It's, it's awful. Like it literally breaks my heart to see this happen over and over and over again in this town that I love and I care like, I care about all of these kids. I care about all of these people. And I want everyone to feel like they belong here, like they're accepted here, like they're supported here. And I, I just, I really don't understand why we're always fighting against it. Um, that's really all I have to say.
Alice Early. Sorry. Yes, Alice Early.
Hi. My name is Alice Early. Spelled pretty much like it sounds. Um, I live on Route Seven. I've been a proud Proster twenty-four alumni. Um, I enjoyed serving as ASB president while I was in school. I want to make it clear that I'm begging you to vote against resolution zero-one twenty-four. I got my teaching certificate from WSU, went and taught in Puyallup for two years, fourth grade. Um, then my husband and I moved to the Dominican Republic. We taught a very diverse group of students there. It really opened my eyes to racism. I saw some against Americans because Americans were really disliked there at the time. So, oh, that was really uncomfortable for me, which opens your eyes to everything else that you see. Um, I saw negative feelings. Um. Uh, it made me think about anybody who doesn't fit that cultural norm. And I have lived with that for forty years now. Um, there was also a huge social clash, class difference in the Dominican Republic. And it made me realize we actually do have that here in the US and in Proster as well. And I think of marginalized people all the time with that. Um, and sometimes it takes stepping away, just stepping back a little bit and seeing that this beautiful, wonderful town, this great place I grew up, we all have problems. There's problems everywhere. Um, we moved to Singapore, worked there for thirty years in schools. Um, we continued to learn about social class, racisms, skin color racisms, LGBTQ, religious, uh, oh, boy, everything. Finally learned about Tulsa. Didn't learn about that in my education and other atrocities. Um, I love the diverse culture there in Singapore and I, when I, one thing I really loved is students appreciate the diversity and inclusion education. I am telling you so much. Students appreciate it, okay? Um, when two friends of mine didn't attend our last class reunion, I asked why and it was because they were classmates of color. Proster makes them feel uncomfortable. I asked the same thing to LGBTQ friend. Proster makes them feel uncomfortable. Makes me embarrassed and really sad. When the beautiful diversity in this world is not welcome to here, oh, it just shocks me. Most Proster residents are such caring and compassionate people, so I just don't understand. I don't understand why you chose these two bills to make this stance that you don't have enough say. You know, when you gave the freeway demonstration yet last week, I just thought, yeah, that's exactly it. The state's giving you these things to think about and you actually have the right to think about how they're gonna come across. So I, I, I just don't understand. Um, I have been, uh, yeah, I have ten seconds, right?
Uh, that's the three minutes and ten seconds.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Okay. Thanks for volunteering your time. Um, and doing homework is really a good idea.
Scott McLaughlin.
Hello, I'm Scott McLaughlin. Uh, I am in my fourteenth year as a public school educator. I'm a parent of two students here in Proster. And I'm, uh, coming to talk about your resolution, uh, zero-one twenty-four today. Uh, I say I was disappointed to hear this resolution was coming before the board would be an extreme understatement. I have dealt with many boards, uh, over the years and, uh, have the pleasure to work with many to understand the basic uh, job that we were all trying to do is to help educate and protect kids as they grow in their most vulnerable states. Now, you've heard a bunch of numbers already from other speakers of understanding that those of us in education are already well aware of. These aren't uh, strange, unusual people from some far-off place, not here. These are our kids, right here. I see them every day. All right, they're not, uh, they're not numbers and statistics, at least not those that work with them, right? Uh, and things like this have an effect, okay? Um, to be seen and understood, to be accepted in your community is foundational to growth. It's foundational to understanding. It's foundational to survival. And coming out in opposition of things that say you exist and we are going to acknowledge you exist sends a message that we don't want you to exist. And this does get internalized, not just by the students who are part of these marginalized groups, but by the students that surround them. We are the ones that model how we're supposed to treat each other in a community. And when we say we want the right to exclude you, that sends a message loud and clear to those students and the students around them that they are free to be excluded. You've heard testimony already from people saying that people are uncomfortable to be in this town because of attitudes like this. So are we going to perpetuate it or are we going to change it? That's what's really before you today. I've had the unfortunate occurrence to see this firsthand, having lost several of my students to bullying and suicide over the years, which is the natural consequence of policies like this. So I suppose I'm just here to ask the board to reflect on this and decide what is the process that they're really trying to build? Is it one that includes and protects all children or just some? That was at the end. That's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Wendy Potte.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Potte and I come to you this evening as a mother, a librarian, a Proster resident and a board president of a nonprofit youth literacy organization. I'm not here because I believe I can change your mind. I hope I can. I'm here because our youth need to see that they matter enough for the adults in their community to stand up for their rights. They matter. Their histories matter. Their stories matter. They have value. Their histories have value. Their stories have value. How can we show our youth they have value? We show them people who have value and also look like them and have experiences like them. Derek Ramsey, a co-founder of Young Black and Lit, a nonprofit focused on providing youth with diverse books, says, "We want black children to think about being all the great things they can be in life. When you don't have a bunch of positive black representation in the media, books can be a simple way to provide a view of life and opportunities and seeing that is important." Oakston Elementary School was one of Young Black and Lit's first partners. Its principal, Michael Allen, says of the program, "Providing diverse books allows children to build their home library. I saw provided, I saw improved self-esteem among black students. The books help defy stereotypes and helped all children develop an appreciation for other cultures. If students do not have authentic perspectives on other cultures, when they go out, out into the world, all they have are stereotypes and it puts them at a great disadvantage." Carrie Swan teaches fourth grade and Louise Rizzo teaches fifth grade at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Literary and Fine Arts School in Evanston, Illinois. Swan says, "It builds empathy in children to read about different kids who have different experiences. It makes them think differently when they engage other humans and that's a powerful thing." Rizzo adds, "Everyone should be able to pick up a book and have a doorway into another culture or a mirror reflecting their own." Pediatrician Dr. Brooke Turnock, who has started a program at her clinic called Reach Out and Read, says, "I have kids who come in and ask me for a book instead of a sucker. The concept of seeing yourself in a story can help the child develop a love of reading and is key to neurologic and literacy development. Of course, literature may be what's getting the most attention in media right now, but this bill affects, these bills affect so much more. Do we want our curriculum to ignore the contributions of women, LGBT, Latino, Black, Asian, Middle Eastern and Indigenous peoples? Do we only want our white, male, conservative, Christian students to see themselves as contributing to our history, culture and technology and think themselves capable of contributing to our future? If you succeed in your efforts in denying these contributions, if your school board succeeds in the efforts in denying your contributions, visit your libraries."
Thank you. Arizona Sessions.
Hello, my name is Marcela Sanchez. Um, I'm a Proster High School graduate from nineteen ninety-eight and I'm also a former public school teacher. Uh, I taught middle school. I'm here with concern about the school board's opposition to two state bills that are essentially anti-censorship bills um, that aim to prohibit censorship of curriculum and censorship of books based on protected class. Um, when I was a student here at Proster High School in the nineteen nineties, um, I had a high school English class where we read the works of Oscar Wilde. And, uh, we read several works, really enjoyed them, and our teacher also told us about the life of Oscar Wilde. She let us know that he, as a gay man in his time in the late eighteen hundreds, was arrested and imprisoned simply for being gay and ultimately banished from his home country. That was an important part of our learning about this author and this playwright because his life informed his works. His life was an important part of who he was and we as students really benefited from learning about that so we could understand the literature that was before us. This was almost thirty years ago and the teacher at that time had at least thirty years of experience under her belt. Nobody in that class left the classroom. Nobody was excused from that school lesson. Even the kids who I had seen leaving the classroom every year since fifth grade during health class because their parents didn't permit them to take sex ed. Those students did not leave the classroom. They stayed and they learned. Um, in a former meeting, one of the student representatives here had a concern about, you know, what this would mean if school boards are able to censor certain lessons and certain curriculum and where, how that could possibly leave Proster students at a disadvantage. What would it have meant if we learned about Oscar Wilde but we didn't know these aspects of his life because some school board member was uncomfortable with kids learning about that? We wouldn't know about this author. We would be at a disadvantage compared to another student who learns the full picture. Um, I would really, really encourage the school board to stand on the side of learning and stand on the side of truth and please don't make a move to censor the learning of kids in this community. You know, school is for learning. People are complex individuals with a wide variety of backgrounds. It is not the place of the school board to try to omit information that children should be learning. Um, and I think you see with the turnout here that many in the community are on the side of kids learning in a learning environment and not having that right taken away by a few school board members. Thank you.
Ms. Ray Mays.
Hi. So I wasn't really going to talk. I thought I'd just listen in, but then I saw, gosh, there's a lot of organization here. So, um, I figured I would listen and see what they had to say and then pass if I didn't feel like I needed to say something. Um, but I will say something, I guess, on the other point of view. Um, I do feel like our school board is here to make good decisions. They have been elected, chosen, voted for by our community. So they do have people behind them who trust, we trust you. We vote for you. We vote for you. Because of. What we know of you, your involvement, your point of view. Your willingness to serve in the community and your thoughtfulness and so. I think that you, it's not just a few school board members, you guys are, you guys, I know you take it very seriously, the load that you have to carry. This. New thing coming out of the state, I think it's very interesting because I was part of the. Sex ed committee that spent over a year going over everything and. The LGTBTQ information is included in that, so our district doesn't. Dismiss that, it's in an appropriate spot to just explain to kids, this is what these things mean and then, you know, go from there. I do agree, education should be about the truth and our kids are not. Soaring. If they were soaring and doing fantastic and all the test scores, then we could add on. Other things. But we're not getting the basics, the kids are not, I used to teach here and I sub here and I just see it all the time. We need to focus on the primary things. And so that would be my encouragement. Also, I know just a few years ago, there's a club at the high school supporting. Any students who identify as LGBTQ, so they do have support. I don't, I feel like, you know, that is a great support if that, if that helps them. And I think just really just focusing on our academics. And I understand, you know, it is interesting sometimes to say, oh, no, what did this author do? I taught English, so I get it. But we don't spend extensive time on people's. Relationships typically, I mean, you talk about Shakespeare, you talk about this, you talk about that, you kind of run into it, run out of it. So I feel like this bill isn't really necessary. Because. That's not the most important thing about inventors. It's what they did with their lives. Mathematicians, what did they? What did they bring to society, scientists? Their personal life is part of them for sure. But we are focusing on their contributions and how that changed our world, and so I think that that should stay the focus. Thanks.
Who says living in a small town is dull? It's not dull at all.
So I am Elise Means. And I have lived in Prosser for almost sixty years. I'm a third generation Prosserite. I entered Witstrand School in nineteen sixty-eight. I graduated from Prosser High School in nineteen eighty. I grew up on a farm on the Rose. I've been here a long, long time. So. School board members. At last week's work session. Members Jason Rayner and Brian Weinman stated their opposition to Washington State Senate Bill fifty-four sixty-two. And Washington State House Bill two three three one. Jason and Brian believe this legislation will diminish local control within the Prosser School District. With regard to teaching, curriculum, library materials, et cetera. Prosser School District Resolution number one twenty-four was then proposed as an official statement. Of opposition. From the Prosser School District to ESB fifty-four sixty-two. And ESHB two three three one. Perhaps this legislation will be approved by representatives in Olympia. And perhaps it will not. But. I think there's a more important issue at hand, ladies and gentlemen. How will this new Prosser School District Board use whatever level of authority it possesses? To guide the district and serve, and this is from the district website. Two thousand four hundred and ninety-three diverse students. Will this authority be used to? Include? Or exclude? Will this authority be used to illuminate? Or conceal? Will this authority be used to unite? Or divide? Time will tell. Keep in mind. Each Prosser School student is a unique human being. Who, who views the world from an individual perspective. But every student board members depends upon you, every student. To provide a safe. And healthy and respectful learning environment to prepare them for their future. Inclusion. Illumination and unity. These are honorable goals worthy of our community's public school system. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have copies of my letter if perhaps I'll give them to Kim.
And that concludes our public hearing portion. If you would like to submit your comments, you're more than welcome to email the. Kim or Selena and get those submitted. So thank you for all the coming.
Wait, can I just ask, can we get those comments in before you vote tonight?
Yeah, I think we'd like for you to hear our comments.
We'd like some more time. We'd like some more time tonight.
We only have, we only have twenty minutes.
And I just wanted to.
That was not.
Saying that I remember sitting at one of these tables called us halalbaloo.
I'm sorry, what?
I heard somebody sitting at these tables. Call this halalbaloo tonight, what was happening? So I'm, I'm personally offended, twenty minutes when you have so many people coming and we don't have time to get it to you before you vote. Unless you're gonna put on your book.
Notification.
And look at all the things we send in. I have a problem with that.
There was no notification of twenty minutes.
To extend it before the start of the conversation.
The start of the meeting.
Why don't you table voting so that the community can provide input and then you're welcome to vote on whatever you want to after you've had the opportunity here.
We continue the meeting. It is three minutes per person for a total of twenty minutes.
But you can extend it as a board. You can do lots of things. There are many people here who wish to speak and be heard. It's within your power to hear.
I understand, but we still gotta conduct the business of the school.
Yes.
And complete that in a timely, in a timely fashion.
This is also part of the business of the school.
I understand, but we also have the business of the school to conduct two batches.
The vote on this matter is not time sensitive, why not table it till we can provide written feedback?
Let me, let's get through, we're done. We, I gave you that, if you can submit your stuff. If it goes to table, then it goes to table, but we're gonna proceed with the agenda as approved.
Are you starting the censorship early? I mean, what, you're from your community. Will you be voting before you hear from us? You don't study in the first place and then in the second place you don't listen.
Well, it is posted in advance.
Posted it last week.
The twenty minutes.
No, we posted the agenda, you could have submitted comments and some of you did.
Why would you choose to shorten the public comment period for this meeting?
We've always had it for twenty minutes.
No, you haven't.
Yes, we have.
No, you have comments.
We have much more comments. Therefore, they went on a lot longer than that.
I mean, we've seen them with you on the school board so much longer than they did.
We are going, I stated earlier, we're gonna do it three minutes per person for a total of twenty minutes. If you wanna submit your comments, please submit them to the office and we'll get them as part of the record. But we are going to move on.
Okay. So, interesting. I like Elise's. Thank you for your vocabulary. This is very telling.
Thank you. So moving on, student representative report.
Caitlin?
So we had boys, girls. Our Boys and Girls Wrestling had to date last week and Boys Swim and we had a boy place a date. Wrestling. And Boys and Girls Basketball are playing in state within the next few days. And then spring sports started coming.
Caitlin, any questions? Noah?
So I'm gonna do your Shimmy's as well. She had to read early, but she sent me her thing. She's working with Mr. Danny, Mr. Regal to host a quote fair for middle schools, or eighth graders specifically, they're coming into high school because there's a lot more options for them. ASB is working with leaders, she can further classify the staff. Recognize and, thank you Blake, and appreciate all of the staff members that aren't teachers or certificated. And then she said, band has a concert competition coming up on March twentieth at Kennewick High School and a band festival on March twenty-fifth at Grandview. And that was Yoshimi's. And then I wanted to touch on, I'll get to this. Later, later on. But. Myself and Yoshimi had a meeting with the middle school ASB on Friday. Thank you to Mr. Danny for hosting that. And we got a few things from them, some good, some bad, some kind of between. Winter two, winter two sports are starting. Girls basketball, which was a winter sport, both A and B squad finished their seasons undefeated, which I think that's really cool. They did raise some concerns about the seventh grade softball field that it hasn't been maintained and it's definitely not up to playing standard. Which has forced them to play on the eighth grade field in double headers. They also mentioned that there's a lack of officials, but that's a whole state issue. A few of the students are competing in NHD regionals on March ninth. And two of them are actually in ASB. And I pitched the idea and I was gonna pitch the idea to you that they come and they present their presentations here to the school board. There's two of them, one of them is on Microsoft and the other one is on Mount St. Helens. TSA at the middle school, which is Technology Student Association, said that they would like to see someone from the high school come down and. Be like a mentor or a guide as they transition into the high school TSA. Because in high school you can compete more competitions, you get more funding or all of that. We discussed Parents on Patrol, which I believe came up in a study session a while ago. It was kind of mixed, but in the end, all of them agreed to try it. They said that they wanted to see. The result that it would have. See how it would affect fights and tardies and missing class. They did suggest though that most of the attention be focused on the two hundred hole because that's where most of the fights happen and most of. All of that happens because it's the most isolated from everywhere else. The Colts Corner is getting good feedback and we discussed an issue with menstrual products not being available and Kim handled that or is handling that. And they had their first dance and they said it went really well and that's all I have for now. I did want to discuss later on in the thing, but that's not for me right now.
Real quick, Noah, the Microsoft and Mount St. Helens, what was the year again?
National History Day, NHD. I don't know if he's here, but he was earlier, Mr. Smith runs that.
He's here.
He's here.
Maybe we can schedule that further.
So if you make some notes.
Any session? Session, next one. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Moving on to discussion item, it would be procedure forty-two thirteen, small western firearms and use of force.
So I'll just. In my learning, since July and working with the security. You have in your board packet, it's a discussion item because I think there's some tweaking in some language. One of the things you'll notice, it's not the policy, it's just the procedure. For example, there's a sentence that's incomplete. It just ends nowhere, it's just not well written and then there's. The word packet, you'll see on page two and seven that some language about. Qualifying as a team, working on some team efforts. Making sure that our language matches what's in the job description. It's just kind of cleaning up of that. And. Met with the secure, I meet with the security officers every other week. And we went through it again today and it's just basically like I do with the other policies they brought forward, just cleaning up some language and making sure. It matches very tightly with the policy. Procedures match with the policy which matches with the job description.
One addition. It's the very first paragraph about the establishment of a school safety and security committee. It talks about membership. I would like to add. A director, but no more than two or somehow.
Add a board member.
Yeah.
Okay. So that we don't have to have a special meeting, but yet we can have a voice of the board on the committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, I like, I kind of like how we're doing it.
With the safety meetings, okay. So can I just say that back from my notes? Some kind of language that says on the committee is a board member. With not more than two?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it says membership may consist of the following, but not necessarily limited to.
Right.
At least that was my thought.
Okay. Anybody else? For my notes before I stop.
Question?
Good.
Noah, Caitlin? I'm gonna try to do better.
We, we discussed it last week.
So I'm gonna try to do better, get your input on a lot of this, so. Alright, moving on to the traveling lantern theater.
It's a play.
I was just wondering. Do we usually get these things after they have a signed contract? Is that normal?
That's, that would not be what we prefer.
I have no problem with the contract, I just wasn't sure if it was out of order.
Sure, there's been some things that I've been working on. Part of that is teaching policies and procedures and making sure that things aren't on. One of the conflict or. Complication, I guess I could say, sometimes they call and say, we have this date available, can we do it on that date? And we don't have a board meeting for two weeks or something and then we have to sign it and then we do that. We want to be as transparent and forthcoming in our planning and I hope the longer I'm in tenure, the longer, the less often those situations happen.
And I, I think probably just kept principles, don't do this super often. So we probably just did it turning in, so its home print was done, but the performance hasn't actually happened yet, so.
Yeah, we don't want to do the performance before you've seen the.
Sure.
Before the invoice?
Where's it gonna be at? Is it gonna be at Witstrand?
Yeah, I'm sure they're doing it in their, in their, in PR.
Any other questions? Motion of the traveling lantern. Performance.
Second. Same, yeah.
It's been movement saying to approve the traveling lantern theater company's contract and invoice. We have a discussion. And then all those that have been are signified by saying aye. Aye, aye, those same sign.
They're probably not against that play.
You'll be great.
Love the performing arts. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to out of state travel for Boys and Girls Basketball. Cactus Jam twenty twenty-four.
So since our boys are playing basketball, I've been asked to bring this on behalf of Coach Cox this evening. So if you remember, I believe it was a few board meetings ago, they proposed going to Alaska. A year, almost a year from now. What they found was some of the coaches that have been before. Said that our teams. Are at a different level and they may not find that a level of competition. A benefit to them. And so a team that we competed last December in Portland was there and. We beat them and they won by forty. They just didn't feel that the competition was there for the amount of time, money. And expense. And I say money, but expense to like families who want to go. So they found this cactus is, which is in Arizona, which is. More conducive to find the warm weather instead of the weather in December, as well as less expenses for families and so forth that want to participate. So it's in replace of the Alaska trip. So it's in replace of the Alaska trip and their hope is that it would be more competitive. So um Coach Cox and um Coach Hennigan would, would be happy to answer any questions, they're just not available to speak tonight. So they're asking for your permission to change from Alaska to Arizona.
Is there any issues with that Alaska tournament? I know the conversation with the contract came up.
We did not, we did not send any money and we did not send it as soon as that.
Okay, I'm assuming the Arizona is about the same timeframe?
Yes. I think it's one day difference, but it's during winter break.
Go.
Should not be instruction.
Any other questions? I'm assuming the funding is all taken care of.
Just like before for us, actually it's probably better. Flight to Alaska versus a flight to Phoenix is probably less expensive. Except if you've ever bought tickets lately, they're like this, all of them.
Procedurally, what happens to the previous action we approved? That like?
Um, because you approved it basically, it, it's fine, but we're not going. So there's no contract that was sent or nothing that was done, so we're, we have no obligation financially or time, but you're talking about this.
But we don't have to like formally take it back?
Check, I can, I can check into O P M A policy and see if you have to make a statement to read, remove that option. But I don't believe so, as long as we didn't send the contract off.
Okay. Or if it was even in this summary somewhere that it was replacing.
It didn't say.
It didn't say.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a follow-up email that we could attach and if we need for O P M A rules, we can certainly add a statement um for public actions that we will not be attending, then it would be very simple to add that. Selena, could you make sure we make a statement accordingly so that we can make sure we're covered? I'll put it in my notes, but her notes are better than.
Any other question? Do I have your motion?
Uh, motion to approve out of state travel request for boys and girls basketball.
Seconding. Been moved and seconded. To approve out of state travel for boys and girls basketball, Caitlin, what, what do you think?
I think it's gonna be fun for them.
I'd rather be in Arizona than Alaska and.
Very point, we'll take it. All those in favor signify by saying aye, 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 those same sign. Motion. Moving on to vouchers. Any questions on voucher? I have one. I didn't let you know, but I think it'll be.
Okay. What is it?
It's on the capital.
Oh, for Bayon?
Yes.
Let me see.
It says stadium upgrades, is that? Um, is that, oh, that's for the track?
The track stuff, yes.
Oh.
Yep.
Ben Union's the contractor that did the track.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, that's all I have. Any other question?
Nope. Motion to approve vouchers.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers, Caitlin, any questions? Noah? All those in favor signify by saying aye, 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 those same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to resolution zero-one-three-four, motion to E S B five-four-six-two and E S B, E S H B two-three-three-one. Any question?
I, I had a, I had a few, yeah, it kind of blends in with discussion though, would you rather we do it now or when you refer to us, what would you prefer?
Um, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I actually, I had some questions for the board as a whole, um, and Jason, besides Elisa, you're the longest tenured here, so I had some more specific questions for you. Um, so I've been looking at the statistics and I spent my weekend instead of enjoying um food with my family, I was scrolling through the legislative website. Um, by the way, Jamaican food is awesome. Um, but I wanted to ask um if a few different numbers mean anything to anyone on this board. Um, does the number one hundred and eighteen ring a bell? No, okay, um, that's the number of bills that were seen by the House Education Committee this session. Um, two-twenty-six, that's the number of bills that have been seen by the um House Education Committee since twenty twenty-one. Um, two hundred eight, that's the number of bills that have been seen by the K twelve Education Committee this year. Three hundred and fifty-seven is the number of bills seen by the Senate K twelve Education Committee since twenty twenty-one. So I asked these questions because of this reason. Um, I read through all of those bills, not entirely, but at least the new sections. Um, and in doing that, I noticed two things. Number one, can people start writing in normal English, please? Um, and two, out of all of. I, I know, I should, um, out of those two, out of, out of all those, I noticed two bills. It was the one bill that was subjected to L G B T Q issues and another one that was attempting to make it unlawful for school boards to ban or restrict educational resources. And those bills are fifty-four sixty-two and twenty-three thirty-one. That's it. I know that last board meeting you mentioned you weren't sure if there were any more bills in the House or the Senate, they're in there all the time. Um, and out of those bills, these were the two that we chose. There was bills in there that related to requiring um STEM education, some that required um sort of agricultural education, which great, have no problem with that. But if you are concerned about the issue of local control, why subject it to just these two bills? And might I remind you that Elisa pointed this out in fifty-four sixty-two, there's a clause in there that there's a committee and then it goes before the board. Your local control isn't being stripped away, it's a requirement from the state that quite frankly, I'm gonna take a stand here, I say, I hope it passes and I think it will. Um, and I don't, I don't know, I guess I'm just, I'm a little bit out of a loss here. Um, and I just wanted to point in on twenty-three thirty-one specifically. Um. I, I can understand in a way opposition to fifty-four sixty-two. But when I look at your opposition to twenty-three thirty-one, which as stated before is almost an exact copy paste of Kennewick's and that went how it went. Um, I just have to say that I am deeply upset with the actions that I quite frankly know you're going to make. Um, because the last time that we had someone try to block curriculum or say you can't read that or this isn't gonna be allowed, Adolf Hitler was in office. Germany nineteen thirty-nine. Um, so again, I'm gonna urge you to vote no, it's not gonna do anything, I'm probably making my sore throat worse right now by wasting my words. But um, there's that and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, I, I do think that taking a more active role in what goes in the education community, I think is vital, right? Um, you know, if, if we start acting on a lot of these bills, whether they are for or against, you know, but I think it's important that, that we stand up and at least have our voice heard in the legislature, that's why.
Is that the role of the school board? To interpret bills?
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm talking, no, thank you. So I think, you know, I think it, it is part of us, if it's going to affect education, doesn't matter how that, that works, if it's, if it's part of what we do here at these tables, then I think we should take an active part in it. Um, so I do agree with you on that, so thank you.
Yeah, one more question. Um, is interpreting legislation the role of the school board, the role of the school board?
Yeah. I think it, I think it can and should be, you know, I, it, and I think it's a role of all of us as voters, right? We should have an active stake in what's going on in our legislature. Whether you, you're for it or you're against it, you should be acting, talking to your representatives, know, know what's going on. So I do agree with that, I do think if, if we play an active role, not only as this board, but as a society, I think, you know, we, you know, we can have a voice, right? Any other discussions?
Jason, Elisa sent a message to us, what happens to that, do we?
She asked that it be read aloud.
So would you mind if I read hers? And then would, would this be the time I would say what I wanna say? So trying to figure out the protocol.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'll start with Elisa's letter. And it was addressed to um Jason Frank, Brian and myself. I apologize for my absence at the school board meeting tonight. I ask this letter be incorporated into the minutes as my comments to resolution zero-one-twenty-four. There are many other bills pending in the Washington State Legislature this session impacting education. For instance, House Bill nineteen fifteen would add a requirement that all students receive one-half credit in financial education in order to graduate from high school. S S B sixty-two oh-five would mandate instruction on the meaning and history of the pledge of allegiance in public schools. Senate Bill fifty-eight thirteen would mandate instruction on agricultural literacy for students in grade seven through twelve. H B twenty thirty-seven would mandate instruction on the Holocaust and genocide. S B fifty-five oh-five addresses learning loss by expanding the school year. S B sixty-three fourteen provides for instruction on Asian-American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander history in public schools. S B fifty-four thirty-one would require the purchase and funding of zero emission school buses. This is a small sampling of the bills pending in the state legislature this session concerning public education. If as a board we were to address each, it would be a significant undertaking. And frankly, this is not the work or role of school board directors. This is the work of state representatives and state senators. From the number of required instructional minutes per day, number of days of school, one hundred and eighty, certifications of superintendents, teachers, principals, endorsement areas of teachers and graduation requirements, every aspect of public education is governed by the state of Washington. To engage in the business of supporting or opposing legislation is partisan action. As school board directors, our roles are nonpartisan and as such, we should not, as a board, take action regarding pending legislation. It is important to note, nothing about S B fifty-four sixty-two and S H B twenty-three thirty-one changes how a school district adopts curriculum. In fact, it is the same process currently in place. A local curriculum review committee consisting of staff and parents reviews curriculum options and recommends a curriculum for the board to approve or disprove. The requirements set forth in S B fifty-four sixty-two and S H B twenty-three thirty-one provide public schools adopt curriculum that includes the histories, contributions and perspectives of the following. Native Americans, people from various racial and ethnic backgrounds, women, people from various socio-economic statuses, people from varied religious backgrounds, immigrants and refugees, people with disabilities, people who are neurodiverse, people who are English learners or use sign language, L G B T Q people. Some examples of curriculum pertaining to these groups that are relevant to our community and region include the impacts Chief Kamaiakun and Chief Joe regarding the establishment of Native American reservations, the role of Sacagawea in the Lewis and Clark Expedition, the contributions of Temple Grandin to the livestock industry and former Washington State Governor Dixie Ray Lee. I would ask the resolution be tabled. The board honor our nonpartisan role and focus on the work of rebuilding the Prosser School District to be among the best in the state of Washington. Sincerely, Elisa V. Riley. Yeah. I have some comments to you, but I'm gonna take a drink of water, I'm thirsty. So first I wanted to just thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's really cool to see a full board, like boardroom. I have not seen that yet in my tenure, so it's kind of exciting. Um, but I really do hope that the board takes all of your feedback into consideration and really does take it to heart. I think it sends quite a statement that you're all here tonight. Um, we attended, Jason, Brian and I, Frank was out of town, but over the last weekend, we attended this um WASTA Board Member Boot Camp. And the E S D Superintendent, um Steve McCullough was there and he shared this quote that as I've been kind of reflecting and thinking about this um resolution at hand, he shared this quote that really stuck out to me. And it's from Emerson, he said, what you do speaks so loudly that I cannot hear what you say. So when it comes to this resolution, I feel like this is exactly the case. The language in our resolution indicates that our issue is about maintaining local control. But by directly opposing specific bills that support inclusive curriculum, we're sending a message to our community that the real issue is that we don't support inclusive curriculum. The position that this is really about local control of curriculum is lost when we attach it to a topic that is political and divisive. Evidence shows curriculum from perspectives a student personally relates to increases the student's feelings that their contributions are valued and encouraged. Sends a message that every student matters equally. I hope we can all agree that we want all of our students to feel valued and supported. Now, Kim already threw out a lot of statistics here on what our student body looks like. Eighty percent low income, seventy-four percent non-white, forty-nine percent female, fourteen percent disabled. Some of these other um protected characteristics, we don't have easily, you know, data to get them. But certainly upwards of eighty percent of our student body is represented by this bill. So I think it's pretty safe to say that including perspectives from these historically marginalized groups is really relevant to our student body. It has been pointed out by many in this room, some letters we've received and Director Riley, that there are a lot of other bills pending in the legislature that affect education and curriculum in particular. No, I like your homework and statistics. I pulled up fifty-three bills currently pending in the Senate Education Committee. There are seventy-three bills being tracked by WASTA that are relevant to our local school boards. And plenty of other bills affecting education being discussed in other committees. So to oppose just these on the grounds of local control doesn't make any sense to me. If the board wanted to pass this resolution on the basis of having local control, then we would need to take action on all of the bills that seek to erode the control of the local school board to make decisions in the best interest of our population. That would be an incredible waste of our time and I believe it's also out of the scope of what a school board director is supposed to do. Politics does not belong on the school board. When there is legislation that negatively impacts our students, there's already a process in place for us as board directors to communicate our position through our legislative representatives and our WASTA district reps. Public school board meetings are not the place for this. I would also question if the board sincerely is just trying to make a statement that local control of curriculum should be with the school board, then we should be discussing Senate Bill sixty-two oh-four, which is written to specifically give local school boards the power to establish final curriculum standards. Instead, here we are opposing specific bills on political topics. I agree with Director Riley's sentiment that this resolution needs to be tabled. The board honor our nonpartisan role and focus on the work of rebuilding the Prosser School District.
Good. I have a question. Um, how much dialogue is there between, you know, the, the school district and our legislators for, you know, for input on these bills? I don't know if you can speak to that. You know, we've got the, what was it, the?
District that.
There are also times that um, some of the organizations like WASTA or other, you know, like for instance, the freshman success piece where um, where there's, we do some direct communication, Kim did some testifying, things to support uh, or not support something that the legislature is trying to do.
Day on the Hill is brought out by um, who schools have what they call Day on the Hill. It's an opportunity for you to go and meet with legislators um, on particular topics.
It's hard to hear you on Zoom.
Do do we feel like we've were being heard?
Um, I can only speak on that Senate bill that I spoke on, which was a budget committee for ninth grade success. I think I was greatly heard. Um, it wasn't a budget item. I was one of four superintendents who spoke. And now it's a budget light item on budget that was not originally there. So I think with following proper channels and and legislative etiquette, I think we can be heard. Um, but it um, is something that we have to follow that legislative etiquette and and make sure that we are attending the legislative, they're called rep sessions, I think that's what they're called, right? And so that we are getting heard in that it's not a something that often happens. Making one statement and then you're heard. It's um, we call that advocacy. If we're advocating for something, then it's an ongoing process and procedure in which you advocate for something. Not necessarily a one and done. I've been on a ninth, I'm just keep using that, but I've been on the ninth grade success committee since the curriculum was adopted seven years ago. And so I felt that when they asked me to speak, they felt that my voice was heard and had experience through three different districts now. So I think that advocacy advocacy work that you do has to come with, I don't know what the word is, time and you're being known in that what you're doing. I just don't think had had they heard Kim Casey um, talk about ninth grade success without depth and knowledge and who I was and what I was speaking about, I don't know that my voice would have been heard. I don't know if that makes sense.
I do think, you know, as um, which was mentioned at our boot camp is small districts have tend to walk away from WASTA. Um, in the past, it's been kind of a slippery slope of small districts being um, I don't know what the right word is, but um, having their voice heard through WASTA. Um, you know, we, I don't think we did for for a while. I couldn't tell you the number of years, but I I know, I think probably last year was our, you know, my first app. Uh, my first year actually trying to get more involved. Um.
No, I'm just needing that.
Oh, okay. Um, so I think you think it's kind of a two-fold action, right? You know, as being um, an advocate at WASTA to try to change their, you know, some of their positions or being more involved in how that develops. Um, you know, and that's a role of, I think, all of us as, you know, you're going to those, right, Michelle, the those meetings and a lot of that stuff will come back to us prior to the the General Assembly, General Assembly, I believe in November, October-ish, somewhere in there. So I think it's, yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I I do believe too that all of our students need to feel accepted. And um, I do thank all of you guys for coming and and sharing this. I my my concern with a lot of the curriculum that's been passed is that it's not age appropriate. And, you know, there's diversity. I I understand that. I understand that. We wanna, we wanna be inclusive. But I think my reason for supporting this and local control is based on some what the conversations I've had with constituents, parents. And I just, I want to know that we are, that we are being heard. And for that reason, that's why I would support it.
I've 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 made my piece at our our last meeting, so um, I guess I'll I'll leave it with, thank you for everyone that voiced their concerns. And honestly, as a district, if we have students that don't feel welcome um, in our district, then then we're just, we we've got work to do. That I'm gonna leave it.
Do I hear a motion? To do anything?
I would, I would motion that we approve resolution one dash twenty-four in opposition to EB SB five six fifty-four sixty-two and ESHB two-three-three-one.
It's been moved in second and Caitlin? No comment? No?
I have one comment. I've been thinking about what I wanted to say.
This is the vote, right?
Oh, yeah. Um, I would say no.
Advisory vote.
I would say no.
Okay. So with all resolutions, we have to do a roll call vote. Uh, Michelle?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And I too will vote yes. Resolution carries. Moving on to uh, action item five is the first and second reading of procedure forty forty, public records request.
As I shared at the last meeting, this was strictly a name change in the one bottom portion of the um, format. Had your previous superintendent's name in it, now we'll have my name.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the first and second reading of procedure forty forty, public records request.
So yeah.
It's been moved and saying to approve the first and second reading of procedure forty forty, uh, public records request. Caitlin? Any comment? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, first reading of policy and procedure one-one-one-six, student representatives to the board of directors.
We kind of talked about that at the last discussion. Um, it's just try and refine. We did the new form. Um, as I talked to some of you about that, there was a change in the GPA. We added um, satisfactory attendance and we um, no uh, suspensions or expulsions. And then we did a number of two board member. And this is just from the discussion. Any changes you see fit or would like to see amended, please let me know.
And we talked about um, uh, following the ASB connectivity.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yep. And so that is not in there, but we will have to add that.
That is mine.
Yoshi, she's not here, but she wanted to ask or talk about um, having a two-term election period. So like instead of having, like, say you join your senior year and you want to opt out your senior year, have someone apply for both years and then stick all the way through. Whoop, sorry. So they don't have to like reapply and like relearn everything.
If you start as a junior.
Have a two-term.
Junior and senior year.
Senior position instead of just.
That'd be good if you have a junior and a senior to start that and then you always have one.
So uh, in your current position, is that something you?
Currently, I'm a senior.
Right, but would you have been interested in doing that?
Yes. I just didn't, I just didn't know about this position my junior year. So it wasn't really a, I didn't know.
Gotcha.
How that I do know about it, I kind of would, just because I don't know a lot of the rules of what like when I'm supposed to say anything or like really what I was supposed to do when I first started. And I started as senior. So I feel like if I would have started as a junior and like learned it all the way through with the other reps, that it would be an easier position to take on, I guess. So.
That's a good point.
Um, the only the thing on the GPA, I I know it's a, I think it's written right now is at two-point-seven-five.
Recommended.
Recommended.
And now the word was required or more. And those are all just from notes I took from our meeting. So I'm happy to adjust as you see fit. I I'm your secretary. So whatever you.
So I wouldn't have a problem lowering that even to like two-five, whatever.
What does the activities code say?
I wanted to make it higher. Um.
Yeah, I was, I kind of went.
A B minor.
Okay, fine. And the activities code says no family classes, in good standing. Activities code, think, so the idea being is that you have to pass all classes rather than a GPA, right?
I do like.
My my thought on that was just trying to, if if we could open up that application process to more kids, maybe, just because I don't know how many kids honestly.
I think it's not more, it's more like uh, we didn't know about it. Like, we didn't even know. I guess my, me personally, I didn't even know this position was a thing until a teacher recommended it to me. And so it wasn't really a a great thing. I didn't even know it was a thing, so I didn't apply.
Hopefully, I will do a little better job at advertising, but I can't speak. I mean, that's not a policy, right? I mean, that's not a policy item, but and then also the onboarding. You had asked about putting some onboarding on, so you'll notice on the last page, there's some onboarding steps. And then requirements for me to meet with them and and that wasn't in our policy before.
I made one just little um, change on the first page for grammar. Thank you. Um, so I'll just give it to you at the end. I I like the idea of having like a junior, like selecting one junior each year that is on for two years and then so just each year you're adding another junior. Um, but what if no one applies to junior? Or what if someone's new to the school who as at their senior year and really is engaged? So I don't know how you'd handle that. But I love the idea of having someone
Two years.
To, yeah, get two years of experience and kind of bring up the the next person.
What if I found a way to use language that said if you are selected as a junior, it's a two-year term? I don't know how I would say that, but or that you have the ability to request a two-year term?
Yeah.
Or something like that?
Yeah, I will give them the option in case they paid it.
What she brought up when we met today was really like to do this next year, but I don't know if I want to fill out the application and do it all over again. Meaning, well, she, what she was saying was if I got on and you thought it was good in my first year, right, then why do I have to apply again? It's kind of what she brought up. And that's what where the two-year term idea came from.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think it's worth, I think it's worth trying. Right? I mean, that we're, as we go through this and as we make our student reps, you know, more involved in the process and, you know, get you more involved with what we're doing and um, I think it's a benefit.
So I'll work on some language for that. And then the way that this would work is it would go for a second reading. And if you didn't see with the corrections you're talking about tonight, then, but if you found corrections and couldn't extend it, except then we just go to a third reading. Meaning, I'll do what I'm I'm hearing from from you and try and make those corrections. But I do need to clarify, are we gonna leave the two-seven-five or do we want to use athletic code or ASB, whatever the student ASB code?
My my thought was if if it's an activity issue, I mean, match it up with with that requirement. Is my thought. So it would, yeah, I guess it would be lower.
Well, I think we wouldn't necessarily put the GPA in that it would have a line or dot that says all um, student board reps must follow ASB code at um, I'll figure out what that word is, but I, rather than a GPA or whatever, it would be the passing of all classes or whatever.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't, I wouldn't list out the whole code. I would just say current athletic and activities code or whatever it said.
Yep, I would, I would, I would like to know if, you know, I guess if there was a way for we, us to get a a good feel or perspective on getting the whole students, all the students' perspective. And there's kids that are probably too shy to come in and do something like this. But is it, would it be, would it be a possible for us to just make ourselves available to you guys just to talk and, you know, we want to hear all the concerns, not just from those that are willing to come and do, you know, here to do this. And I know they're representatives.
Yeah, they have a way that they reach out to them if they have something that they'd like to bring up. And then I meet with them to make sure we're doing, and that's why we added the middle school. The meetings that I'm doing with, well, they're doing them, but I'm participating in with the middle schools. We are trying to get broad representation.
Well, yeah, I just, I want to make sure we're we're being inclusive in that. So, you know, that because or even if we're making ourselves available somehow, even if it's wherever, lunchroom or whatever, just so, hey, you know, one board member is gonna be there or two. And you got any concerns, you come and and share with them, you know, and I, yeah, I was just thinking about that. It might be. But if the representatives are doing their job, yeah, that would be, they should be getting a good representation.
Let's ask Caitlin, how do you get feedback?
Um, well, I'm involved in quite a bit of things around the school and I guess I have it for years. And through ASB, we just kind of a lot of what we do takes in input from the students, like even events we hold. And so I guess it's kind of like they and I get, they put it on Instagram and stuff, and then they saw that we were the reps. And so we've Noah and Yoshi and I have had multiple students come up to us and like notify us about things that they've seen concerns in, and then we came and addressed it. And I guess we didn't really say it was.
I didn't ask you to stop. We'll see.
I don't think that was anything.
Sorry, go ahead.
So anyway.
Know how to reach out.
They they have reached out to us. Because I remember Yoshi brought up the point of something in the parking lot, and that wasn't something she noticed, I don't believe. I think it was something.
Oh, the crosswalks.
The crosswalk, yeah. And there's just been other things that people have come to us about that then we come to you guys now.
Yes, we have the.
So I just um, I don't, let me just think about the protocol for OPMA on a, so you're gonna approve that with adjust, with um, suggestions, and then I'll make the suggestions.
Yeah.
I think is that. So you have to move it to the next, we're moving it to the second reading with adjustments. Or we change it.
Yes.
So I'll move to move it.
From the first reading to the second.
From the first reading to the second reading with adjustments.
I'll second.
So it's been moved in second to move uh, to move policy and procedure one-one, one-one-one-six, student representative to the board of directors, policy and procedure to second reading with adjustments. What say you, Caitlin?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item seven, request for qualifications.
I'll just really quick bring up, I interrupted.
No, no.
Quite done with your zero. I'll just bring up what I'm learning about this. So our capital levy passed, and now we have to do a request for qualifications for a project manager um, to help us manage those projects. And um, I'm learning, a versus a request for uh, qualifications allows us to tell people that we're out there. Then we review them like you would any resume or any packet, and then we can choose. It's not a bid like a lowest bid or whatever. Then what that does is then allows them to tell us about the cost. It doesn't require us to use them after we've chosen who we would like to work with. Does that make sense? And then we can approve them as them after we hear their quote for doing the work.
And it looks like this is includes everything that we had contemplated.
Yep.
Okay. Um, are we going to have? Okay. Um, are we going to have? Um, and this is irrelevant, irrelevant to this topic, but, or this action item. But are we going to have a, um, or I think we should have a committee that, like a facilities committee that kind of look over these projects?
Yep. So we'll have a, we're gonna have two committees. We're gonna have the tennis court because it's a big project by itself. And then we'll have a capital levy committee that helps manage, not, manage is not the right, give input on the projects and make sure we're prioritizing and, and doing them. We know that the tennis court is the most expensive project. But once we get the project management team on, they'll say, okay, this is what we think is the money and we have to figure out what we're gonna borrow and what we're gonna start right away. As the levy dollar, as the taxation dollars come in, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna prioritize and go accordingly? Um, so, um, this is kind of a cool thing for me and this is my wheelhouse. Um, so we, we would always have community input and so forth. Um, much like what we heard, um, you're basically saying you're giving me the, this is what you want me to do and now I'm gonna help manage the how. And so we'll put those committees together and we'll get those voices.
Any other questions?
I can move to approve the request for qualification, zero, zero, one, twenty-four, construction project management.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the RFQ zero, zero, one, two, four, construction project management. Caitlin, what do you think? Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up is request for call RFQ zero, zero, two, two, four, all architects for RFQ.
Basically, it's the exact same thing, but I do want to add one thing that I wish I would have said before, um. We're going to look for partners. We're looking for partners for a long term. Um, remember when I was first brought in in July and August, we're looking at a facilities plan. Granted, we have different items that this capital levy was specifically meant for, but we want to make sure we have, um. We're doing these items, but we're also planning for the future that we're using the right things in the right time and, and so forth. So these are partnerships that we're looking to build and. So I just want to make sure you understand that this is a, kind of almost in the weirdest way, like when you hired me, right? We're trying to find the right company for the right bit for what we're trying to accomplish.
Any questions? Caitlin, what do you think? Getting better, I've gotten better. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I'd motion to the request for number eight, request for qualification, oh, two, zero, zero, two point two four, architectural and engineering.
Second.
It's been moved and saying to approve the RFQ zero, zero, two, two, four. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to consent items. Any questions?
Motion to approve, uh, consent items.
Second.
Been moved and saying to approve consent items, Caitlin?
You're coming.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right, that concludes our action items for tonight. Moving on to reports, uh, student enrollment, Delise.
Okay, so I have a couple of things. Um, the first thing is that, um, we are going to be bringing Craig back. Um, and he's left our remaining hours on his contract as my mentor. Um, he's gonna be helping collaborate on a couple of projects, um, which include notes, notes to the financials for upcoming annual audit. And, um, our annual bond disclosure report. Um, this, my mentorship with him, um, definitely enhances our initiatives to make this district better and to make myself better. Um, and if we do go above and beyond implementing contract hours, we'll do another contract. Um, second thing is enrollment and, um, nothing too crazy, except for really great news. Um, our enrollment is up ten this month, which is crazy. Um, and it's definitely not something that's, uh, very common. February is usually the month where enrollment dips down.
I want you to know we're the only school district in southeastern Washington with up enrollment.
Yes.
We have something to celebrate.
That's right.
That is a lot. So, yeah, we're pretty happy about that one.
Any questions for Delise? Caitlin? Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, Deanna.
I just have one, one, one thing, but a big thing. Um, I've been, I've talked a couple of times about working with Columbia Basin College to try to provide um, the opportunities for students to earn their AA and not have to, have to go on campus. Um, while some of them do take online courses right now, but, um, but, uh, so this is actually the plan. We're presenting, uh, to families for the first time on Monday night. I presented to the staff today and counselors, um, earlier this week. So a student who doesn't have transportation, um, can take all of their classes here. Um, and earn their AA through Columbia Basin College. They have to take a minimum of thirty credits through CBC, but we offer even courses here that are CBC courses. Um, it's actually really exciting where we've got four new dual credit classes coming on this, at least four, maybe, maybe six. Um, because we have some new courses with, that CTE is doing. Um, we're waiting here, US government is highlighted in blue there in the middle because we're waiting to, for an approval. Um, and, uh, we just got recently approved for, to have general biology. Now, if a student was going, like for instance, uh, an example into a medical career, they probably will have to go on campus for a different science class that we do not currently offer. But, um, it is an issue of equity for our students. We have a lot of students that don't even go to the running start night or even think about it because they know they maybe can't go if they had to go or, and on campus. And so I'm really excited about it, um, because it's, um, I, I think it's a great opportunity.
So.
Oh, good. I have to tell you, Deanna's worked really hard on this. And the piece that we have to figure out how to message to our community is you get it here in this building within reason. We're not having to drive to CBC. Or, I hate to say you won't have to take any online courses, but most, you have to take some. But, but for a minimal number, right? And that's huge.
But we can schedule you here to do that, like in Val Baker's class or, um, so that you're not kind of on your own. There's some support there.
Our wifi, our technology, right?
I think also there is, you know, we have a lot of, actually quite a few options in an AA, the only two classes. There's a lot of classes required and they have, of course, a big list you have to choose from. The two that are actually on the form when you get it is the two English classes, like you have to take the two English classes. And you have to take those in the category, but you do have choice, the other categories, but you have choices. And, um, I, the other big advantage for kids is a lot of our kids really want to get that AA in the two years and they can't fit it all in, especially if they want to spend any time on campus. And I personally have, um, I, I like for, for my own kids, I did not push them doing running start because um, they were active athletes, they were active, they, they, they're, once you get done with school, you can go to work and you're gonna work for the rest of your life. But for some kids, this is a big thing. Kids that might be planning on going into, you know, pa, post, post BA work. I mean, you can be in college for a long time. And it definitely is a financial advantage for families if they're able to take advantage of this. So, um, it's, I, a big deal. And I also, we, we really are gonna get the message out there. We're actually gonna start with our freshman orientation. We're gonna tell the eighth graders at freshman orientation about this, cause it is possible that there is some classes that maybe they would be taking and they can start taking classes really in earnest as sophomores. And so they don't have to try to fit it all in, in the two years that you have to if you only do the running start version. So. I'm gonna find, uh, one of the big things is the, the transcripts. So like right now, we have five different colleges and universities. It is, is the nature of the beast because of the different courses that they offer. But for instance, if a student wants to take a particular science course, there could be a prereq and if they haven't got that transcript in. So I'm gonna work to find the money in my grants to help so that we can, well, the kids will be able to order transcripts and we can support paying for that. So they can send them at the end of their sophomore year and the end of their junior year and the end of their.
Oh, this is, this is great. Um, I love, love the idea of keeping as many kids on campus as we can. I think there's a lot of community members that feel the same way. So appreciate, uh, appreciate the work that you've done. That's, that's awesome.
Shout, and I have to shout out to Casey Blair. She has been a big help, um, a big partner in this whole process of, of these, these courses and she's a big advocate. So I don't know if she's listening. Thanks to her.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deanna.
I would have to say, so, um, you know, right now we're, we've got to pay for running start. Does this, is, would this be the same thing?
So actually, so it's kind of interesting. So, yeah, part of her, you know, through, would go to the college if they were taking CBC course. But the state is actually paying for college and the high school classes. So in the, the past years, we've been paying out of my grants and out of district funds to pay for it, but now comes, the state now pays for that. So we don't, we don't even have to exchange money anymore. If it's college in the high school, um, the dual credit with CBC is like five dollars. It's not.
So we instead of paying the, the full, the full chunk for a full-time student.
Running start, uh, yeah, they're taking col, the college groups were paying a bigger fee. They're doing actually run those CBC courses that aren't on this list.
Then, yeah, we would pay, but as, as long as they stay in, in get their basics here at the school, that FT stays here. That's.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's a great deal and, you know, I commend both of you and Casey for putting the work in. I think it's awesome. Not only is it safer for our kids to stay on, on campus as much as possible, but you know, then you know, they can have that experience of high school, but still get the AA.
And also get the support that they're provided by being in the high school environment versus kind of being treated like adults on, on your own if you go.
It's awesome.
We still need to add even more courses to this as time goes on.
We actually had, we applied for a communications course this year, but the call, the university that we said, oh, we're not taking anymore right now. We have too many. So basically either we, I'm trying to see if we can get it somewhere else. Um, because we do have a teacher that's qualified, but each college university sets their own requirements of what the qualifications are. So that's a little bit of a interesting situation. Um, but there are a lot of opportunities, um, for kids. One thing I would highlight, if you look down at the electives, one thing is if you're talking to people, it isn't wide open with electives. If you see an R behind a course, it is a restricted course. Which means, um, it's not credited quite the same way, but it, it, they can only have fifteen restricted electives. They can take more if they want to, but only fifteen would apply to their name.
Any other questions, Caitlin?
Great. That was one of the reasons I didn't want to do running starts, cause I wanted the experience of high school. And so.
I'm sorry, you're a senior. And you're saying like, if you'd only done this before, right? I have one other thing. Um, I did go, get to go to a little bit of the, um, Wish Week Assembly and I know that you in particular did a really nice thing for my husband and he really, really was touched.
I didn't do it to be there.
Thank you. I only was there literally for his part and then I had to go to the meeting.
I didn't even.
I just lucked out. It was at the beginning or I wouldn't have got to see it. So.
I didn't even know they did it at the assembly. My brother came home, even they announced your name.
Yeah, it was, it was really nice. And I really, really appreciate it. Those little things go a long ways for teacher, with teachers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deanna.
So guys, um, I, I give you the, the, the sheet, right, that I always give you. I'll do a quick rundown. I have met with the new mayor. Um, I'm happy to say that second bullet down, see that word legal? That we have no outstanding legal issues for the first time since I've been on tenure. So that's a huge one. Communications continuing, the pulse of Prosser still getting, the number of likes or information down, is down a little bit, but our overall, um, viewership per se is up. Um, gap training, we're just about done. I'm super excited to have our, um, security officers do the city of Prosser training, which is great. Um, that's just a showing that we're doing the right work. Um, getting ready to start, but back to what you're talking about, the tennis committee, um, still meeting with Housel ASB that we've talked about today. You're gonna see a lot about an attendance competition. We're calling it March Madness. Obviously we're playing on that. But we're doing grades on great, grades against grades and we're really working, our goal is to put our attendance back in the ninety-five percent. Where if you see on the sign down below, we're hitting, we're running right in that ninety, we're gonna have to do some work to push that over up into the ninety-five percent. District-wide, I think we're about ninety-two, but we need to push that up a little bit. Um, we're, we thrive regarding prom graduation parties. We're getting ready to send a message out about staying safe and spring parties and graduation parties and all those things. Um, Tri-City Herald article about the Crystal Apple Award winners. I don't know if you got to see it, but Wendy was featured on that. Uh, we will honor her on the seventh at a comp thing. She gets her a thousand dollars and hopefully we're sending her on to be towards the state competition. Um, facilities, that's pretty much there. We do have an issue with the poplar trees at Witstrand. They are a concern. Um, with our ground being wet and the winds going there and we've got those old trees, we're gonna have to do something there. We're working on some quotes. Um, I just wanted to make a note of the summaries, like, why'd you make a big, so Mrs. Haven, um, Miss Haven ordered, um, exterior garbage cans for the playground in the front of the school and everybody's like, so I'll just put a garbage can out. Well, between squirrels and people and wind, whatever. So you kind of have to have the right kind of garbage can. And the whole idea also is to make sure that our community feels like they can use the facilities and take their kids to the playground. But then we also want them to clean about for themselves. Well, if you don't have garbage cans out there, there's no place. So I think it's a example, it's the reason I put on there, of the proactive approach that we're working to make a facility where our community feels comfortable and welcome to use. Um, safety and security, um, our meetings, we're re, they are really working guys because we realize that we don't have some right signage on some doors. Um, we talked about signage for the track, right? All of those kinds of things. So if that committee is, are really working together to make sure that we're sharing a positive environment where people can come and, and go, but yet we um, example that, um, Pat, Patrick McCullough brought forth was this. In a school in western Washington, they had a guy come in with a kind of hood on it, his GoPro camera and he got around the school. Well, then the police came and took him out and he wasn't really doing anything wrong. And his defense to the trespass was there was no sign that says I can't be here. So we're gonna make sure that we have signs that say visitors allowed, come to the front door, you know what I mean? Like, we want to make sure we don't run into that if we don't have the right signage. Um. Leadership, we have AS, AWSP session four with our principals. I completed my governmental, government training, five hours on Zoom. I just want everybody to know, it actually, I learned a lot, but five hours on Zoom, it's pretty dry. Um, we did our board camp, I'm sure you guys will talk about that. Uh, we have a strong commitment for budget prep work. Deanna, Delise and I are meeting weekly as well as we met with our first department. We are still committed to have a, a board meeting in May with a, a budget and an approval in June. Um, it's a lot of work. It's a lot, a lot, a lot of work and that's where we're gonna bring the right people to the table to do that. Um, upcoming contract negotiation season is just around the corner. We have a full opener with our teachers association. And, um, some little pieces with other, um, groups. And you mentioned this when you asked me a question, the planning capital levy project, um. We're gonna be working on that after we find these couple pieces and then we'll start advertising. So this is summary station of the last few weeks.
Great. Any questions for Kim?
Thank you, Kim.
All right. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to.
Just, are, are we hosting prom or are we out of town again? Just curious.
I think it's at the old high school.
Oh, that's nice.
I believe. I think that's the correct thing. I think that's the correct thing.
I, I was heard, it was like last year.
That winter ball.
But that could have been wonderful. I don't know, I'm not.
I thought it was a high school too, but then I thought, was that really winter ball? Was winter ball?
Oh, so maybe it's.
I think, I think prom is at a bigger venue.
Okay.
Even than last.
Thank you for correcting me. No, no, that's why your voice is important.
We need people to know what's going on. Thank you.
Not typically, um. You can, if you have a question on anything here, feel free to just email and they'll get, they'll get back to you. Thank you. Um, where am I at? Board members, thank you. Um, Cheryl.
Oh, just that we attended the West, um, board member bootcamp on Saturday. I thought it was really great. I especially liked the Q and A session at the end. Um, I wish I had like an extra hour of that. I felt like it was the most valuable part. Um, but anyway, I thought it was really good. And um thanks for setting that up for us. Especially cool that we got to host it here at our school. Just once again, I, I really want to say thank you too to everyone who came out tonight and, and spoke. I just think it's, um, really tremendous when people come out and. Have their voices heard.
Thank you, right?
Um, yeah, bootcamp, uh, along with Michelle, Jason and Kim on Saturday, which I. It's good just to kind of get a better idea of the flow of, um. Board responsibilities, superintendent responsibilities, so. Still an ongoing, um, learning curve on that, so that was, that was helpful. Um. Monday sat in with the FCA. Group, um, for their, their weekly meeting, which was good to see some of those kids again. I haven't seen. Someone for quite a while. Um, scheduled to meet with Rick tomorrow, um, just kind of. See what all is going on with the vocational department. Um, a lot of good stuff going on there. So excited to catch up with him. Um, just kind of hear more of what he has to say and obviously hoping for a. For a big tournament run from the, uh, boys and girls this week, hopefully in, in Yakima.
Uh, just, I was on the hiring committee for Prosser Thrive for, um, Sharehouse. And, um, yeah, we ended up finding somebody, a good, uh, good, um. Candidate and we, and she has been hired and we'll start on the eleventh. Of, um, of March, so, yeah, the share house will be open pretty soon.
Um, I don't have much, you know, I, I did attend the bootcamp and I think, you know, one thing. That I got out of it too was an opportunity to have discussions with board members. Um, Lakeisha from Federal Way and Sandra from, uh, Vancouver. Um, so it's nice to get the perspectives that they have, you know, at their school district and it was really nice to. Be able to kind of have those conversations, you know, the district's outside of eastern Washington. So. I thought it was really well put together and, you know, Kim, thank you for getting it brought here. Um, then.
Nice to show off once in a while.
Yeah, and I, I think a funny story is most like the, uh, our moderators or whatever. They went to the old high school and they're like, um. Is this, is this really where we're supposed to go? And somehow they got turned around and found the right building and then, you know, as soon as they popped out of the trees, it was like, oh my goodness. So they were, uh, really impressed with our school, so. Um, with that, um, any other comments? Questions? Uh, we will have a regular board meeting, March thirteenth, right here at the Prosser School Library War at six P M. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.